Check, check, check one, two.
Check, check, check one, two.
Oh, look at it. Big day.
I had to go get some, I thought I was gonna fall over. Can anybody hear me on this thing? Say hello, thank you. I'm struggling with these things tonight, I don't know what's the deal is, I'll try to get it so that it works. But, uh, thank you so much for showing up to this Thursday night special, uh, presentation. I call it, uh, denactly, it's a, uh, a work session. It's not working, how about that there? Can you hear me okay?
No.
How about that?
Yeah.
Alright, here we go. What a way to start. Well, welcome tonight, it's, uh, Thursday night and, and we are having a special meeting tonight. This is our work session with the, the city council, and we've got some H2O20 people here. And this should be exciting, this should be fun for Watertown to, to see what's on board and see what we're gonna do and, and hopefully everybody will, will get behind this and, I just think it's gonna be a very, very exciting time tonight, we can go three hours. Uh, that will be the top, because after three hours, I'm shutting it off, I've only got two Diet Cokes. So, there we go. So, I would like to turn this over to the H2O20 group and let them get started, and they have a short presentation. Uh, when they get through theirs, then I, I get to go up front and, and talk a little bit about, again, we're gonna have some questions and answers that were asked at the city council meeting, they will be on the board, that, that the H2O20 group did, uh, did respond to. So then after that, we will, uh, we'll be passing out microphones that don't work, and you can ask your questions. And see how it all goes. So, here we are, I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Rob.
Alright, thank you, Mayor Thorst. Hello, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Alright. We'll shoot from the hip here, hopefully this will continue to work. My name is Rob Peterson, I'm part of the H2O20 visioning process for Watertown 2020. Um, been working on that project for the last, uh, three years. And what I'd like to do first is just go through a little bit of history on how we got to where we are tonight, so that everybody can get caught up to speed. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the community for everybody coming out to talk about this important, uh, subject for our community and for the future of our town. Whether you're on either side of the fence, I, it matters not to me, I'm just glad to see so many people come out to talk about whether they have questions or concerns, or support, or whatever, so, appreciate everybody coming out, uh, thanks a lot for that. So, looking at a little bit of the history of this, uh, project, we gotta go back a few years. There is some evidence out there to say that this, uh, community center, rec center, building, multipurpose facility, whatever you wanna call it, uh, was talked about as early as 1996. I haven't lived here that long, I've only been here about three and a half, four years. But, uh, there is evidence that back in the 2004 timeframe for the Vision 2015 process. Are we there yet? Okay. There is evidence back in 2004 for the Vision 2015 process that, uh, the idea did come up that the two major issues were the Boys and Girls Expansion and then the, uh, Multipurpose Sporting Center. So, it started really getting a foothold back then. And, uh, the committee was established under Mayor Ford in about 2000, uh, Mayor Fox, sorry, uh, in about 2007. And the goals were to determine if there was a need and, if there was a need, thank you, um, establish a plan for managing it and putting it together. So then in 2009, a proposal was made to the city, uh, for about an $8.4 million flat floor space building. And, at that time, it was decided to look at all of the concerns and needs of the community, including the Boys and Girls Club Expansion, the Rec Center Expansion Plan for the current pool, the age of the pool. Um, I know there's been a lot of talk about the age of the current pool at the Rec Center. The only thing I would tell you there is that it is not broken, it is not dead. The, the number that we've been given as a committee was that it was in its 39th year of a projected 40-year lifespan. Doesn't mean that the pool is about to die or isn't any good, it just means it's on the down slope of its age and we should be, uh, planning proactively for that. Um, the age of the city auditorium, and then the school district, as far as the arena goes. So, in July of 2010, the mayor at the time had asked the committee that was working on this project hello, to look at, um, a plan that addressed the issues noted above as well as the flat floor space that was needed for the youth in the city. So, come along, 2010 is when we started the process of the steering committee for the Vision 2020 process to ask the community what they felt was important for our town in the next 10 years. So, we started that process by putting together a group of citizens that was concerned about what, uh, Watertown would look like in 2020. So, I want everybody to remember that the committees that worked on this project were basically citizens, just like all of us here tonight, putting together a list of concerns that they wanted to take forward to the city council and say, this is what we want in the future. So, the 2020 process kicked off, and about two years ago, I swear and try not to touch it. So, about two years ago, we put together a committee to talk about flat floor space in the multi-use, uh, center. And it was comprised, comprised of, like I said, uh, concerned citizens, about 35 people. But over the last two years, we've gotten input from hundreds of people around the community to ask what they wanted, what they wanted to see, and what they didn't wanna see. So, there were a lot of things that were brought into this process, and some things that were not brought into this process that we'll talk about as we go forward. And, uh, Bert and Scott are gonna give us some background on how we arrived at some of those decisions. But, uh, it was a long process, we vetted out a lot of different ideas, and, uh, we'll go through the details now.
Good to see if this mic works, can you hear me?
Yep.
Alright, maybe we should share this mic, maybe not, let's see. Alright. Developing a multipurpose community center. That's what we're here to talk about tonight, and I have two main items to go through, location and the facility itself. I don't sit still well, so I'll walk a little bit. Um, and if I'm in your way, just, just tell me to get out of your way. Alright, so, that could be what the, our new multipurpose center looks like. That, that is, the illustration is, you can obviously see, looks pretty good there. So, location, uh, first discussion, we spent many, many hours on location. And, as probably everybody knows, we concluded them in, in this area. Okay, so, get my pointer out, okay. Down here would be Corstow Church on the stage, over here the cemetery. So, this is 14th Avenue, you know that tree line right there? Okay, that's where the new middle school is going to be built very soon. And that is where the new community center is, uh, projected to go. So, location is located in the fastest-growing area in our community. It is close to the schools, and there's plenty of room to expand. Those are three of many reasons of why we chose that area. Alright? Now, some of you might recognize that. It's a little blurry, but I think you're figuring out that that's the high school and auditorium, uh, or, um, the city arena, excuse me, and so forth. Wow, there's a lot of cars there. And, uh, if anybody is around that area, you know, during the day or at any event, you know there's still a lot of cars there. And now, that's all building there, about half of that parking lot is all building. So, another reason why we were talking about moving the Rec Center is to take care of some of these parking issues and for more room. So, this last weekend, I came to work out at the Rec Center. And I'm like, ooh, something's going on, wrestling was going on, I'm glad wrestling was going on, we need those events. I, there was no spot, I made a spot. And then, I'm telling you, buddy, and then, seconds later, a very nice lady pulled up behind me. And she said, I'm parking next to you, I was like, good. And then she, she's like, I've been around the parking lot three times, couldn't find a spot. I said, don't worry about it, I do this all the time. So, we have parking issues now. Little, few numbers for you. Lake Erie Tech, Watertown High School, historical, projected enrollments. You can see them up there. Currently, 3,050 students between those two entities. In 10 years from now, that's gonna be approximately 700 more. 700 more high school college students. 400 to 500 more vehicles every day. We need more room in that area. Okay. So, back to the site plan. You, you know where we're at. Right there, that line that comes through there, you can see that? That is the center of the floodplain that goes through there. That's the center of it. I just wanna make sure it's clear that all buildings here that we're talking about are well north of that floodplain. Okay, and also, you can kinda see that there's gonna be, uh, some retention ponds already built in. The, when these buildings are built, they have to follow codes and all the laws. And so, proper drainage and the engineer can do a job and get that done right. So, just wanna make sure we're covering that. Alright, so, now, another topic regarding location. Standalone or connected to the new middle school? Spends a lot of time on this. A lot of time on this. Alright, and we got feedback on this. So, one reason to connect it to the middle school is, it's gonna lower our costs in many ways. And I'm not gonna go through all of them, you can read what's on the screen there. A second reason to connect it to the middle school, and this was feedback that we received in all those meetings that we've done in the last 18 months. Less travel, and it's part of the school bus turnaround. Our parents wanted this. They didn't wanna have to go get their kids and then take them to the new location for practice. In addition then, we are, we are presenting six gyms with this facility, connected to two gyms of the middle school. So now, that can bring in even bigger events to this area. So, there you see it. That community center that we're talking about here would be approximately 115,000 square feet. And then right here is the middle school, so right there where you see me drawing, that would be the two gyms of the middle school, right there. Alright. So, I see lots of parking. Front view, you, you walk now, before I go on. A hundred and, over 150 people have given direct input on this vision that I'm going to show you. Alright, and it's been, we've had some very good discussions, some very long discussions, and, you know, that's the process. We're not done yet, okay, this is not set in stone, and so we're still getting feedback. So, what you're gonna see is not what it's going to be, but is what it possibly could be. Alright. Who's humming? Alright, so, let's go back then, you walk in those nice doors there, and then that's gonna take you right in here to the, to the lobby way. Alright? And now, you can obviously see the pools, I'll come back to those. Right down the heart of the facility where they should be would be the locker rooms, I'll talk more about that later. And now, let's talk about the gyms. Okay, the, the one gymnasium with potentially six courts. Sorry. Oh, I gotta, I gotta turn. Okay, so now, are the courts gonna look that way, two by two by two, we don't know, okay? But, they're going to be used for many things in the community, like basketball, volleyball, soccer, wrestling, park and rec, and anything else that can go in. Yeah, it's, it, for the entire community to use. And, maybe some other things, as I've heard at some meetings. So, we are talking right now of a seating capacity at a minimum of 2,000, but that could very well change. If we reconfigure this like we've talked about, that could double. Okay, that hasn't been finalized, and so, we'll figure that out in time. And of course then, as I said before, the two middle school gymnasiums would be right over here. Alright. The pool. We currently have an eight-ling pool, we talked about the pool. We are, we are talking about having a 10-ling pool, 25 meters one way, 25 yards the other way. Um, our swim team is fantastic, I'm so happy that I've been part of that with my daughter. And if you go to one of those events, they're so well ran, but they're crowded. We got seating upstairs, okay, 300 plus up there, and that's definitely needed. So, other, other topics about the pool are gonna be covered later, but I think that covers it. So, that's the competitive pool. Now, we go on to the zero-entry leisure pool. Zero entry means exactly that, you would walk in at zero inches on down. This pool would be used obviously for fun, but it would also be used for people who cannot access our current pool. And there are many people who cannot get into our current pool right now. There are many deficiencies with our current, uh, Rec Center, with steps and, um, getting anywhere, little, and also trying to get into the pool. So, this would be for fun, and then during the day, it could serve, a portion of this pool could be served for programming, um, again. Alright. Little faster now, child watch room, you know what that is, it would be included. Community room, during the day, there could be business meetings, in the evening, the weekends, there could be, um, birthday parties. There will be a separate adult senior room for fun and fellowship. A, a yoga room that we don't have now. Uh, a larger fitness, uh, group fitness room. Racquetball courts, as you would assume. And then just a little bit about locker rooms. Another big piece of information we have received is family locker rooms, family locker rooms, we need them. And when you have very young children, and so, I mean, you can have little kids that come in for swimming lessons, you all know. You have family locker rooms, and then, as you can see, then larger adults and larger youth locker rooms right down the middle of the facility. Larger saunas, larger sea rooms, larger whirlpools. You can read that, you can, you can see what I'm talking about. Alright, we go upstairs. Upstairs now, the first thing that jumps out is this track. Our current track, 16 laps equals one mile. This track, seven laps would equal one mile. Much, uh, great improvement. You can see obviously the area there for cardio, the area there for weights, and, uh, and this area then in the middle is for our youth acceleration programs, okay? Speed agility strength, for seventh graders on up. Something, and they're, they're at capacity now. More people wanna take them, if we can't fit them in, this will help. You get a picture then of the track, what that could look like. And, I'm done, so, we'll see you later.
We good? Still good? Alright. Um, for those who don't know me, Scott Hunger, uh, is my name, I'm, I'm part of the, uh, the 2020, uh, focus group on, on this area. And, it's great to, great to see the, the turnout, we've, uh, we've done about six or seven of these we've done, and I think this corner here signifies the, the last number we got total, out of all six of them, so. This is good, we need, we need community input on, on these things. The next few moments, uh, I'm gonna run through more of the, the non-impulse of, of this facility. And the real question of why, we're looking at all of the components that we are placing into it, okay? Uh, there, there's a lot of need in this, in this community on quality of life, uh, facilities and initiatives. We, we fully understand that, uh, the community needs to start somewhere, okay? And I know there's a lot of groups here, alright? This facility is going to touch a ton of your groups. There is a few groups, but it's gonna be up to these ladies and gentlemen and, and mayor to decide in the future of what else, uh, the city of Watertown has capacity to do right now. Okay? And, and there's a lot of discussion on that, we'll touch on that. Hiking space, uh, field, trails, the finish, there's a lot of that. And I, I truly believe, uh, Watertown is starting to hopefully gain a can attitude instead of a, we cannot attitude. And the, we do have capacity to do some of these things, but we need to start somewhere, and that's what we're looking to do. Okay? As far as this multipurpose center that we're looking at, the why, alright? I think we need to step back and, and look at what are our facilities we have today that are city-owned and, and city-run. We have the city auditorium, okay? And my, my father played there. And my my father played there in a little tournament from Warner, South Dakota came down here. I played there, my brothers played there, and now my children are playing there. Seventy-six years old. The recreation center, twenty-nine years old. Swimming pool, as we stated, forty years old. And now, just come online here lately, the armory. And as far as the conversations I've had, Park and Rec is very happy with their twenty-one-year-old newer facility, but they have their office there. And it and it is going to be a great facility because of the turf that they brought in there. There's a lot of new activities that they're going to be able to already do today. Current facilities, yeah, some you may say have run have run their course. They do lack size, all right? They do lack some quality. They have a low capacity, all right? But at the times they are needed, it is very difficult to get in those facilities. We lacking quantity. That's been a a reason for wanting a lot of flat floor space for a for a number of years. Lack efficiency, I I would love to study, and that will probably get done, what a new facility runs for for utilities versus the four of those combined. They're not suited for all ages, okay? One thing I want to touch on that. A lot of you probably seen these graphs over the years, but it's not a mystery that between the years of forty-five and sixty-five, the baby boomers, there was a lot of you. There's a few of you in this room. My folks are in that category. And you can see, we're just at the start of those individuals starting to retire, and it grows. All right? The facilities we have today, I I hope we don't have to have an ADA study on on those facilities, because they do not need it, as we said today. And in all ages, cannot use them safely or functionally, we just use them. They're not suited for today's activities. There's activities and sports today that weren't around when when these facilities were built. Okay? Or they definitely weren't the size they are today. Lack area for expansion, as we've stated, and the gyms are spread all over town. When you want to try to host a large tournament, you're sending them to ten different gyms today. There's a lot of talk, and there's there's three main phases of this building we're looking at. Like I said, we are trying to start somewhere and and try to knock out as many as many birds with one stone as we can. All right? Bird touched on it briefly, and I'm going to go in a lot more depth. All right, we're asking, there's been a lot of talk, a lot of stuff on different social media, a lot of things we heard in the various meetings, all right? And we've had a lot of them, okay? I'm excited when we build this building, and it's going to happen. Go back to what had become my part-time job. It can be good. Why why move this recreation center? The Boys and Girls Club, all right? And I'll touch on it more as we go, has needed room for expansion for a number of years for their quality activities. And they do unbelievable things for the kids and youth and families in this community. Expansion, that is a huge deal. You saw that picture of the school. It didn't take too many years to fill in everything around it. When we do planning from here forward, we need to make sure we have enough land so that doesn't happen again. The rec center also needs space for today's needs. They're short on it today, let alone allow for future expansion. These are the parking issues. Provide an administrator for the facility, and I'll touch on that more. Keeps all rec center programs intact by staying with the aquatic or pool element, and the memberships provide a revenue source for the overall facility. I'm going to touch on a little more, all right? A huge reason, like I said, we we understand both sides of of the the business of the rec center, okay? And we're going to touch on it. But if we don't have a revenue stream for this facility, it's going to become one of the others. This is one of our only city-owned facilities that comes pretty darn close to break even, as we sit today. We supplement a ton of them. And if you want to sit down with your council members, they can probably lay those out to you, and the numbers are big. Okay? Boys and Girls Club again. Why? They need some space. They would like to stay in their current location. And one of one of their directors, they speak tonight on that area. They think it's very key to stay in the area they're in. This will allow them to expand to meet today's and future needs. Touch on one other piece real quickly. There's a near twenty twenty-year graph. It shows where we came from, we look nine years ago at two hundred and ten, and they're sitting here two seventy today, of kids they they work with each day. I think their projection of only growing thirty more may be light. If you look at it, right, to put thirty more kids to fifty in a facility that's already grassed. The school system, all right? There's the potential by the rec center leaving that area. They have further gym space in the existing in the existing pool area for the school system, and return the stage to them, so they can handle other events that they can't do today, since they've lost that. The Parks and Rec Department has also dearly needed space and capacity for years, all right? This would would allow them to officially run their program. The scheduling issues that they've had and the fights that maybe have come over the years, I'm sure they have, because they've got a lot of important activities. And obviously, when you've got three entities trying to get in a very low number of gyms today, it's been a nightmare. A lot of that can be alleviated by having more space in a facility that's proper for the city. And families. There's one thing, there's no reason a town like Watertown, I didn't grow up here, but I've been here thirteen years now. There is absolutely no reason that extracurricular activities are starting practice at six in the morning and going ten, eleven at night. There's absolutely no reason for that. Would allow families to actually have a home life each week. These activities are supposed to be enjoyable and fun. They still are. The kids don't know any different, because that's what they grew up with. Would it be a heck of a good deal to be able to do those things and still have a home life? Who benefits? All right? The whole the whole facility and the the whole community and every citizen benefits from a facility like this. All right, it has a very broad reach. You look at youth, obviously, youth are, they have a lot of activities, okay? We're running through a lot of us in this room and this community every day. But a new facility like this, normal practice times, all right, would be big. Potential with that water park for things, more activities in the winter, all right, months around this area. The zero entry pool for safety, for safety reasons. And it goes it goes on and on. Young parents, parents and, you know, and adults. City, the expansion of of city leagues potentially. LATI could have more intramural options, you know, to go, normal practice times, all right? You can just go down the list in all these areas. The park and rec, able to have more space, and actually, the rec center to have a dedicated gym just for them. Okay? Adults and seniors, a dedicated room, all right, for activities that that they would like to do. With the baby boom generation coming through, that's going to be more and more, and a facility they'd be proud of. Also, more space to do the activities, a nicer walking track, zero entry pool, and an ADA compliance facility for those individuals. Business and industry is a big piece, all right? At this point in time, and in the business world, I work with a lot of a lot of of the companies in town, all right? If Watertown wants to start drawing more business, we have got to get quality of life facilities in this town. There's no doubt about it. Businesses and very high qualified employees and employees for that matter, or families you're trying to get to move here. They don't they don't come if you don't have something to draw them, all right? And we have a heck of a community. We put unbelievable money into infrastructure. They've got great great school system. We've got great fire stations down. We have a great police station, all right? We have all of that backed up. We have a great outdoor pool. But there's a piece that's been missing, as you can see at how many visiting processes this has been up to bat. Okay? There's a lot of guys I've talked to that when they try to recruit and retain, the first thing, and it might not be them, because they're coming for a job, but their spouse, whether male or female, asks about it. Where where is your wellness facility, you know, and those types of things? And it doesn't get it done a lot of the time. And the city, overall health and wellness of our community and the city of Watertown as a whole. I'll touch on the city a little more, the economic impact that could potentially be there. There's economic impacts, you know, that comes in when we do, when we have our tournaments today. But a facility that can actually handle larger tournaments and a larger variety of tournaments with wrestling and soccer and all those different areas. I heard soccer practice in Tonopah the other day. All right. Potential new, potential new new events. This is new revenue, all right? This, we worked with the convention and visitors bureau on these numbers, and these are estimates, and I think we're pretty light on these estimates in speaking with some area communities. Cheer and dance, cheer and dance. Competition. Not in cheer and dance yet. My stride, yeah. John Holdorf thinks I would cheer and dance. District wrestling, and you can see the numbers. The ones that really interest me is when we have the square footage that a building like this could have, what other events could we bring in that we're not even thinking of today? And then, expanding the current events. I remember the Boys and Girls Club tournament. It was a premier tournament when we were coming here, and I know there's a lot more than the eighty-some teams when I was growing up. And every one of those, the families that came to town, we look forward to coming to Hummer, hanging out at the Ram Coda right over here every year. But you can see the the impact, and there's a lot of numbers missing there. And that's on the city. It's not the facility. That's what comes into the city on spending. There's questions that that we're going to run through, all right, that we've been posed, all right? And that's what we wanted to do, okay? We've we've gained through our public meetings that we've already held on online sources, and that from the the mayor and the city council at a meeting we had. So, we're going to try to answer maybe a few that that some of you have just by running through, okay? One of the big questions was a concern for competing with private business, okay? And that's, it's a touchy subject, and I and our, like I said, I'm a citizen, all right? So, I'm just, we're and and everybody that is that is from the twenty twenty side, we're in your chair. We just chose to to take a a bigger role in this project. But is our is our thought, it's a very, it is obviously a valid concern, and this group right up here is going to have to address that. But one thing is important to remember, that the recreation center was built in nineteen eighty-five, and the city decided to do that at that time, at that time, if there were no private business center. And that is the job of a city. If they do not have some sort of a resource that they need, they need to do that. It was decided to do that at that time. The private centers and the recreation centers have coexisted for a number of years by offering a different level of service, and there's no reason that can't continue. A decision to limit the growth of the current rec center, and this is one piece of this facility, but it's a pretty vital piece of this facility. Ultimately affect the manner in which other community assets are managed. So, there's a precedent that these gentlemen are going to have to decide on, because if we're worried about that piece right now on this, how are we going to handle the other ones in town? Because there's a lot of competition, and I just listed four that our group could think of. There's a lot of it. So, we're going to have to decide where we want to go with that. And we get it. I'm a business owner too. Another question posed to us is what are the Watertown community rec center deficiencies? What, I mean, what what are there? And we ran through a few. No family locker rooms. We touched on that. Adult locker rooms, small, crowded, none of that. Big problem with ADA issues. Handicap accessibility downstairs for the meeting rooms and partying, or accessibility for the locker rooms. No zero entry depth. They crawl in on tables. Pool could use additional lanes to accommodate the increasing numbers of the swim team and the lessons and the classes that they do from the rec center at the same time. Cardio area and weight room areas are small and crowded, small groups can work there at one time. Have to give up the gym seven days a week to either Boys and Girls Club and or various sports groups. This is great, but there's, but there needs to be a dedicated gym. Spending an extra ten thousand a year for an offsite yoga studio. And a big one that a lot of people don't think about is there's a lot of entrances into that facility, and there's no way to manage it. Both the recreation center and the Boys and Girls Club are are not able to control the people coming in and out. The Boys and Girls Club has a concern of unwanted people. The rec center has had people coming through the Boys and Girls Club and use it for free. And a big piece of it, I don't know the liability issues. I don't handle property casualty, but there's got to be some liability issues and not knowing who's in the building and what time. Is it possible to phase the expansion of the equipment of this rec center over time? And that's how it's going to be done anyway. Yes, it's possible. They're going to meet today's needs. But the last facility has lasted thirty years. We need to plan for this one the last thirty to fifty years. Well, we need to be able to adequately expand and have room for expansion to meet commodities. What's unique about the recreation centers compared to the private facilities? These are all questions that came from the public. Recreation Center is designed to be family oriented and has a lot of offerings that the private clubs do not. The private clubs have offerings the recreation center does not. They again, coexisted, and they continue to do so. And there's a lot of data, we don't have time tonight, but you can sure feel free to call any of us on the committee, that we have called other communities, and we have talked for a long time to those private owners. We have a lot of very interesting data. Is expansion of the current facility possible? The second floor is adding. Just keep going back. I don't want to beat this, but we need to answer these questions. It's not been confirmed by our committee. We're not engineers. But one thing we do know is expanding the second floor does not address the needs recovered. They don't have a gym of their own. The Boys and Girls Club still needs expansion. School doesn't get some of their areas back, doesn't fix the parking issue with the increased load you saw that is probably coming down the pipe. And also, a big one, doesn't have, meet the ADA standards and doesn't ease any of those issues proceeding here. What happens to the commitments made to the Boys and Girls Club? There's not going to be an impact in in that area, all right? And that's, again, up up the discussion between the city, and there's discussions ongoing. Renovation costs, all right? The recreation center leaves, obviously, there will be a cost, but the Boys and Girls Club will do its best. The city is planning to assist in that renovation cost, all right? And again, that will be up to the team right behind you. The ongoing funding requirements for the Boys and Girls Club. This is an obligation the city has signed in the leasing contract for, and again, it will be up to this team right here to adjust and and handle those moving forward, just like we always have. What will be the park and rec's involvement in the new facility? And this is exciting stuff, because they do great programs, and there's just not room for it today. But what has been proposed is the park and rec will manage all the gyms, other than the one that will be dedicated for the members of the recreation center. They will have full reign on it. And today, the school system, park and rec, and the recreation center work together, and they will probably be able to do that in the future. I don't see why they wouldn't, but it's going to be a heck of a lot easier when they have space. Relation with schools. The school operates and manages their properties as they seem deemed fit, and there will be a usage agreement, like I've stated, to utilize this new facility. And that will be up to the park and rec. Operating projections, all right? And there's going to be further discussion from the mayor and his team on the operating and how we move forward with the financing of this facility. But it is projected at this point that this new facility will cost between one point two to one point three million a year to operate. Bottom line results say that it'll be about a plus or minus thirty thousand from that number. It's very close to break even, just like the current facility is today. The estimated cost of this project is between twenty-two to twenty-four million, and that's on six courts, as we've got it proposed, okay? We we've had this looked at several times. We've talked to other cities also that have just completed these centers, and we're pretty safe that that's the top end of this thing. It would be great if they would come in below it, but we obviously won't know that, so we can make a decision to move forward and get get to the bid bid process. Okay? At this time, I'm going to I'm going to ask Steve to come up, and he's going to go through. There's areas yet to go on. Thank you. Thank you.
Get up here a little closer. Okay. Is it working okay? Now, if I didn't know Scott was going to talk about him being a cheerleader, the next slide would have had, get into tutu. I'm not a computer guru, I would have had it out there, that would have been the thing to do. I tell you what, this is such an exciting time for Watertown, and, and I'm going to tell you, this was, this has been a real struggle for me. I would say about, in 2009, when this was first presented to us, I wasn't so sure about this thing, and I think we've got a lot of council people, a lot of people in the audience said, no, I, I wasn't, I wasn't very on board. But you know, I've got a good friend sitting up here in the audience, Roger Whittle, and we talked, and, and I've kind of come across, you know, I've, I've talked to the different organizations and what Watertown needs and, and how we can move that forward. And Roger says, you know, it's kind of funny, Steve, he says, I've watched you over the last two or three years actually evolve into, into understanding this program and understanding this building. So I just wanted to say how exciting it is to, to, to look at this and know what it can do for Watertown, and I think you folks, when we get going on this and when we get this thing built, it's going to be fun, and I'm going to, I'm not on this quite yet here. What I wanted to mention was, is our trip Monday, we had a blast, we had one blowout. And that's all I'm going, that's as far as I'm going on that one, we had a good time. We went up to Fargo and we looked at their facility up there, what a great facility. Now Fargo is 150,000 people, and, and their facility was 80,000 square feet. Now the one we're proposing for Watertown is 110,000 square feet. They had an incredible building up there, it was, it was fun to go into it. But then we drove another, another hour north, and we went to Grand Forks, and they built 159,000 square foot. And you know, when we got in there and we walked around and we're up there on the, on, on the walking track, and there was people working up on the tracks, man, I wanted to jump on the machines and I wanted to get right into it, and I think it's going to be something that hopefully, hopefully when this building committee comes together, that they can look at that Grand Forks one and say, that, that's what we want. And I think this is going to be a change, I think you're going to see, you're going to see this building that they've got presented, and they've done all this work, and I think you're going to kind of see this progress into something bigger and better and stronger at a cost that Watertown can afford. And, and, and this is what I'm going to start with, it is time, it's time for Watertown to, to absolutely unite on this thing and move our community forward, and, and we can do this. And what I mean we can do this, we as a community can come together, and we've got the facilities now, we've got the property, we've got the, the funding ability to do this, and let's go through this, and we'll just, we'll kind of go through that. The first thing we're going to do is we're going to take this project from the H2O20 tool. They have done an incredible job, they've worked for days and days, and, and many people have worked on that. We're now going to bring their plans into the city hall, and we, we've put together a building committee with myself, Mike Danforth, who has been very instrumental in this project, Bill Reifreberg, I, I look at Bill as an expert on building, you know, he's got the hometown, hometown business, John Small with the rec center, Terry Kelly, Park and Rec. Terry is, is an absolute marvel when it comes to pools, he keeps our pools going in Watertown just top notch. Tom Drake, our city engineer, we depend on him so much, Rob Peterson with the, the H2O20 committee, Rob has been instrumental on, on working on, on this entire project. And then the JLG architects, JLG, Dan Miller has come up, and he has been just so open to, to visit with us and work on the costs and, and things like that. The next thing we're going to do, which I think everybody really wants to understand, is how do we, how do we pay for this thing? How does Watertown afford 22 or 24 million dollars? And I think that's what this finance committee is going to do. I'm going to be sitting on the committee, but what we've done is, is we've actually, Shelley Evers up, up front here, she's our city finance officer, she's going to be on this committee, Rick Holm from the school, Leslie and Rick have been very generous in offering his services for, for us to kind of look and see, you know, how do the schools go about their capital campaign, things, things like that. Dale Christensen, Dale is very instrumental in Watertown, Dale has, has worked with the Northwest Banks for years and, and knows money. And I think that's what we need to do, we have to understand how money works, and, and then Todd Keyes, First District, I don't know if Todd's in the audience tonight. Are you here, Todd? Well, he's on board. And what's nice about Todd is, is with the First District, he's actually able to look at different programs that are within the United States that he can, he can help us with, there's grants available and different financing programs. So this group is going to put together the committee of finding out how we can pay for this thing, what's the best way for Watertown, and that's, that's our goal. We would never want to hurt our cities in any way. The capital camp, campaign committee, we haven't yet determined, I'm hoping that you guys will all sign up for that tonight, and when you do sign up, it's just like a $5,000 donation when you walk out the door. So we're all good with that, right? So this, this campaign committee is going to come in there and we're going to try to raise money through the community. I think once the community gets on board, you're going to find large companies are on board. I've got letters in the office from, from certain people that have said, you know, once this community gets on board with this thing, they're going to, they're going to put up some cash, and it's going to help. But what we have to do, and I really feel this way, in order for us to get going, we have to look at this as a city project, and the city is going to do it, and if we get some dollars that come available for us, it's, it's absolutely the best. The timing is right. We've got the, the things done, and the, and I think Scott and Bert both mentioned it, we've got the two fire stations done, we've got the police station done, we've got dollars underground, we've got sewer systems done, we spent over 100 million dollars over the last 12 years, and I think it's kind of time we, we start doing things for, for everybody also. Historical low interest rates, as you know, and I know there's investors out here that would love to see interest rates a little bit higher, and so is Shelley. You know, she's sitting there with a lot of cash getting this .20 percent, and it's a, it's a perfect time to, to go out for a bond issue. Increase cost due to inflation, you know, you take a look at inflation, I'm going to just mention, here's the interest rates on a general obligation index fund, this is a, a tax exempt general obligation, this is a bond that the cities are responsible for through taxes. You can see through 1981, the, the interest rates on a GO bond were about 13 and a half percent. I recall money market funds at that same time, 17, 18, 19 percent. And they have strictly, I mean, not strictly, but they have just gradually dropped down to, to a low of, of about 3 and 1/4 percent back in 2013. They have since started working, working up, and if you recall, the city of Watertown actually did a couple of refinancing of our bonds that are out there now to get us some better interest rates. So the timing is, I mean, I don't think you could be at a better time. Inflation, you know, we mentioned inflation, if we continue to hold off, this is what 24 million dollars would look like if we waited a year at a 3% annual inflation rate. One year, the 24 million dollars would cost us 24.7 millions. And you move that all the way up to 10 years, if we, if we wait like we have, another 10 years, this project would probably cost us 32 million dollars to accomplish it, the inflation rate say we used. What, what the, hopefully the plan is, and this is where the finance committee is going to come into, but I wanted to touch base on the second penny sales tax, just so everybody understands, second penny sales tax is kind of a, it's kind of weird when you think about it, I know it took me a while to, to grasp this when we first got on the council. But the city does have a tax, and you go and buy stuff, it's 6% sales tax, or that goes directly to the state, 2 cents goes to Watertown. The first penny goes for our operating expenses, this is what runs the city. The second penny is designated for capital improvement, that's where you build, that's where you build things. You put this money in there, and you, like we've done now in our, in our last budget process, the second penny is what's going to build our ball diodes, the second penny is what's going to buy our fire trucks, our ambulances, things such as that, pick roads. We would not want to jeopardize that second penny. But in 2013, what we're hoping for now, we don't have that last quarter, I know, unless you got it in now, Shelley, did you get it? It's going to be coming in pretty quick, we expect the revenue projected at 6.8 million dollars for that one penny. Out of that penny, we expect to, to fund this project. So what you would see, if we were to do this, absolutely no increase in your taxes. And in fact, what would be nice, if you take a look at the sales tax level, and it's, it's there already, you're going to look at people coming to Watertown and doing the shopping, we're bringing them here for this project, their, their, their kids are playing in the gyms and they're, they're having fun, they're out buying stuff at the grocery stores, at the retail stores, they're paying for our building, and it's, it's, it's a nice thing. So that 6.8 million dollars is not just Watertown people, it's everybody that comes to Watertown. But I'm hoping that you understand where that second penny comes from. So again, I'm going to just tell you, this would absolutely do nothing to your taxes. This is not funded by property taxes. Now, if you were talking about a general obligation bond, which I mentioned just a couple of slides prior, the general obligation bond is a bond that is paid by your real estate taxes, and when, when you pay your real estate taxes, it pays off the bond, this is not a GO, but I'm going to touch that. So your taxes would not go up on your home. Operations budgets, I know Scott touched on this just a little bit. Right now, what we're looking at in 2013, the budget for the current rec center and, and the pool and all that whole facility is about 940,000 dollars. Proposed new facility budget, 1.3 million. Shelley has worked hours and hours and hours with John Small, where you at, John? You probably know this inside and out, all these numbers, it's, it's very interesting. Mike Danforth has been also in those meetings. The other day on the ride home, Mike said, my gosh, Steve, when this is built, what am I going to do? I'm thinking, that's going to help my time doing the office, Mike's not going to be there, you know, talking about. A little bookie, that's right. So we're looking at 1.3 million dollars is what it's going to cost to run that facility, that's the whole worth. But you know what? This thing's going to make it, it's, it's going to, it's going to have that operating expenses, they're going to bring in that revenue. So I don't look at this thing to be any different than what we have right now. If we have to subsidize the, the rec center right now by 20 or 30,000 dollars, I expect the same thing, I don't expect any more money to be coming out of our operating expenses. One of the least subsidized, in fact, one of the least ones right now is the park and rec facilities, you know, with this rec center. It, it just, we don't, it doesn't cost us anything to operate it. So that's where I'm at, we're going to have some questions in a little bit, but right now, we're going to let some of these organizations come up here and say a few words. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'm talking on behalf of the Watertown School District, Wesley Judding, superintendent, and it's been a wonderful opportunity to be a part of the H2O20 process, and I was also part of the 2015 process in discussing how to improve our quality of life here in Watertown. Watertown is a community that has great people, we all know that. I've lived in this community all my life and value all the progressive leaders who've come before. The ones who rallied to move the interstate next to Watertown instead of going straight north from Brookings, missing us by 30 miles or so, we have to commend those people that came before. The ones who voted for the new Watertown High School over 50 years ago to put, to put it where it is today instead of by the Sioux River and the Elks building currently. The ones who brought Lake Area Tech to Watertown over 40 years ago to help this community progress. The mayors and the council people who helped bring off, who helped bring about progress to this community, like the Watertown Events Center, the outdoor water park, just to name a few. I remember we've always had courageous and, and difficult discussions during those times, and the right decision has always been made. We continue to move forward. This new project is again a progressive move to grow our city and keep our people in our community enjoying all that we have to offer. The right decision needs to be made again. The new Community Rec Center Health and Wellness Center is a facility that will enhance and be a showcase for people coming into our town. I'm fortunate to travel to a lot of places following Aero events, and I love going to games and watching the pride of communities when they bring in new venues and buildings. There's great projects and great community pride when people show off something that shows how much they value in their community by investing. Watertown needs that same pride to show others all that we have to offer. We know that families support their children at all types of events and follow their children to tournaments, swim meets, contests, you name it, not only parents, but grandparents, aunts, uncles, and even neighbors. This type of community venue will definitely be a build it and they will come facility. The economic boost that this type of facility will bring to our community will be invaluable to our entire community, retail, motel, hotel, restaurants, gas stations, the list continues on. If we build it, we know they will come. We watch it happen all around us in other communities. Tonight, I'm representing the youth, the young adults ages five to 22, there's about 5,800 Lake Area Tech and K-12 students, and I think it's vital that we keep our community young. We build and progress for them more than for us. We must show them what we value when we invest in opportunities to enhance our community and make our community a better place. The Watertown School District fully supports this project for the future of this community to attract more families to come here to live, to visit, and invest. Mayor, we are with you. Thank you.
Hey, Mike, before you get going, I'd like to just throw one more thing out to you that I, I forgot to mention, and, and when it comes to the finance committee, this finance committee is also going to look at more of a quality of life issue bond also, and what I'm hoping for on that, and we've had this discussion, is that if, if Watertown can get this done on 24 million dollars and without a lot more expense to us, I don't know why we couldn't, take a look at a quality of life bond and, and get an ice, get another sheet of ice out there for us, and maybe finish up those trails, get the softball diamonds done right away, and, and you know, possibly a marine at the lake, there's just so much that we could get done for Watertown and get us moving ahead. And I, I forgot to throw that out there earlier, but that is one of the goals that our finance committee will be looking at.
Okay, I'm Mike Carter, Lake Area Technical District, and I just wanted to put a couple things in perspective, and I just, and I'm, what a range of, my family came to Watertown in 1970, I graduated, spent 30 years in the military, came home to the Lake Area Tech seven years, and most of those buildings were here when I left, all but one, in fact, was here when I left to go into the military, so they've, they've been there for a while. I've been involved in this project for the last five years, actually six years, and Lake Area Tech was one of the first ones that wrote a letter of support, saying that we needed a flat floor space. Our students right now today, they will have inner murals, they go up at as late as 11 o'clock at night, they do that because of the time, when they can get in there, but also they're limited on what we can do for inner murals. You can't have a number of students sign up for basketball, but all basketball, but all that is, is, you know, requirements that this team has looked at and overlooked. What I'd like to type in just a second to talk about is the fact that in Watertown, if you look at your demographics, you need 18 to 35 year olds. When you talk about, you know, we not only need this facility to attract students to Lake Area Tech, because this is the type of mentality that they look for. They no longer come to campus They no longer come to campus just to look at the programs. When they come to the campus now, they're looking at the buildings we have, and they're looking at the community that surrounds Lake Area Technical District. Our students today, in 2011, we did an economic study on them, and they spend, in the nine months that they're here, on an average, they spend a little over $2.5 million a month in Watertown. And that's quite, you know, when the mayor talks about a second penny sales tax, there's a lot of revenue that's going to... But if you talk to the businesses, the businesses, right now, unemployment is way down in Watertown. And we're very low, and that's something we're very proud of, except our employers need employees. They need those 18 to 35 year olds. And we need to attract them to Watertown. And when they talk about cost of living, that's one of the big driving forces that people of that age now look at. I speak throughout the country on the differences in the generation. And one of the big differences in the newer generations is the social environment and what type of amenities and what is the community that they go in, that they're going into. They will move to a community for the amenities that are there before they move to a community for the job that's there. And they will actually take a lower paying job because they like the community. And a lot of times, it's because they want to stay close to them also. So I would encourage people to look at the demographics of Watertown and realize that you have a severe shortage of 18 to 35 year olds, and you need to do something to attract them. And this is something I believe needs to be done for that particular reason, as well as all the other reasons that you first mentioned. So, you might, I commend the city council and the mayor for taking this on and listening to everybody today. And I really hope for the best and wish you the courage to take this on and step forward and keep Watertown moving forward. Thank you.
Well, my name is Donna Bierschbach. I'm the manager of the swim team, and I'm also one of the assistant coaches with the swim team. And so, I'm representing the pool portion, obviously, of this new facility. I've been involved on this committee since we first started and have been actively involved with all the different meetings that we've had. And so, we have talked about the pool at great length. And so, one of the things, the pool, I feel like I'm being asked trick questions all the time, because people ask me, "So, do you like the current pool?" And the truth is, yes, our pool is a great pool. We have a wonderful pool. When we travel around the states to swim meets, our pool is one of the best pools in the whole state. So, we're not saying that the pool we have is a horrible pool. What we're looking at with this new proposed pool is the ability to get a little bit larger, to be an even better pool. And we want to keep all the positive things that are at our pool. And one of the positive things we have is the seating and the ability for people to watch a swim meet, because you can't do that at every pool in the state. And so, we're really happy with that. The swim team, I've been involved with the swim team for about 12 years. I was thinking about, how long have I been involved? And my child, my oldest child, started on the team when he was eight years old, and so I've been involved with the team for 12 years, not in this role necessarily, but been involved with it. And when I was seeing those nice little charts that these guys put up for you, one of the things that I was thinking about is that the swim team, 12 years ago, had 40 kids on it. So, in the last 12 years, the swim team has grown from 40 kids to 165. We are currently at 165 kids on our team, and we are maxed out. And what that means is, we really can't take any more kids onto the team. We would love to take them on, but we don't have enough space in the pool to have them properly able to swim and train and such like. And so, that's what's wrong with our pool. Our pool is great for hosting a swim meet, it really is. But when we are going on a day-to-day basis, we are maxed out, we cannot practice the way we need to. And so, that's the reason the swim team is very much in support of having a new pool that would be a little bit larger. And the main part of what we really like about this is that there's a separate leisure pool. That separate leisure pool is what's going to take all that pressure off of the swim team, or some of the pressure off of the swim team, by having a separate facility where they can have their open swim, and they can come and they can play. We don't have to give up three or four lanes every single night to open swim and family swim and that sort of stuff that goes on. Those are important activities, and we want them to go on, but it cuts into the place where lap swimmers could swim, and where the aqua aerobics people can work out, and where the swim team can competitively practice. And so, that leisure pool is a very important part of why the 10 lanes is appropriate for us. I'm asked all the time about, is that the right sized pool for our town and such like? What is proposed is a 10 lane, 25 yard by 25 meter. Our swim team is in full support of that sized pool. That would be perfect for us. We would be thrilled with that. And what we want to keep is, like I say, some of the positive things that we have. One of my main concerns is this idea that the pool might not last a whole lot longer. The pool seems perfectly great on the outside. If there was a problem with the pool, and a new pool is not built at the new facility, then I'm hoping that somebody would have to repair that pool and would keep it functioning for us. Our head coach, Chuck Beckler, comes from Mitchell, and in Mitchell, they actually filled in their pool. They no longer have their pool, their swim team all of a sudden no longer had a pool. This is a huge fear for the swim team. We do not want something to happen where we no longer have a pool at all. We have a hard enough time fitting us in right now, but we certainly don't want to lose the pool entirely. So, we are totally in support of the new project, and we're in support of what the pool looks like in its current proposed state.
Can everybody hear me all right? My name's Melth Carter, past president of the Watertown Youth Soccer Association, Board of Directors, and a current member of the Board of Directors. I've been involved with the soccer association for over 10 years. Both my children grew up heavily involved in soccer. On behalf of all of the soccer parents in this community and the Board of Directors, I want you to know that we strongly support this facility and the ability to provide more platform space that's suitable for soccer, which is really essential. This kind of space allows us to do several things, one of which is to host an indoor soccer tournament like we had in January. Since we started doing that tournament three years ago, we've had 60 to 80 teams come to town for that tournament. The Convention and Visitors Bureau estimated the economic impact was somewhere around $203,000 from that tournament. So, we need that kind, and right now, we're limited on the number of teams we can have because of the amount of space that is available. And more importantly, one of the things that we have to do right now is, we can only have that tournament when the arena and the auxiliary gym is available to us. And unfortunately, that varies from year to year because it depends upon the basketball and wrestling schedules. And so, our tournament has to move from one weekend, one week, into another weekend from year to year. And that really doesn't work in youth tournament activities like that, because they get locked in that they're, this town is going to have a tournament this weekend, this town is going to have a tournament the next weekend. And so, as an example, this year, we had to have it in January, we tied right up close to when Sioux Falls had their tournament, and so our actual participation was down this year from the previous year. And it was all because we had to get moving around. So we really need to have the ability to have a consistent weekend every year. We also need to have enough space. Right now, we had five ports spread across, or five, yeah, playing spaces spread across four different gymnasiums, several of which were really too small for what we're trying to do in terms of indoor soccer. If we can get this kind of space that they talked about in this facility, we'll be able to have a first-class tournament every year and have that kind of economic impact in the city. But more importantly, what some people talked about before is, we're really desperate for space to have regular practices and games each week of the indoor season and winter. Right now, we have to, it's like everybody else says, we have to have things scheduled for late in the evening, or they're moving around every week to a different time slot. Parents get confused. Just this last week, Kelly was telling me that we got bumped, you know, we had practices scheduled at Jefferson and IC, and they ended up getting bumped because of basketball or whatever. So we really have a problem with having adequate space for our practices. And then, the other thing that we found is that to be really competitive in our high school soccer program, we need to have year-round access to soccer facilities. And so, that's why we started an indoor soccer three or four years ago. And it's clear that that's going to be what's necessary for us to have competitive teams. And then finally, we recently hired a technical director to help with coaching and moving our soccer program forward. And just after being on board for three months, he said the key limitation that he sees to improving our soccer program is the availability of adequate, adequately sized platform space. So, we're 100% in support of this. I guess I'd like to just confirm what other people have talked about. I'm a businessman here in town, and I've talked to other businessmen. And we have a low unemployment rate. What we really need is people to move to the community so we have more employees. And quality of life is really essential to that. And so, this is, in my view, really important to the economic development of the community. So I hope we can move forward with a can-do attitude and get this thing done. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Suzie Straff, and I'm the president of the Watertown Wrestling Booster Club. We head up the youth wrestling program here in town, and we also work closely with the high school wrestling program. This facility is a significant concern to our wrestling family. I do see we have some wrestling faces out there, but we do have youth practice going on as we speak, so we might have a little decline because of that. Currently, our youth program hosts two events throughout our season. We host a team tournament in which teams fill 22 weight classes and compete in a dual tourney, just like a high school dual format. This brings in about 275 athletes that compete in this tournament and about 1,200 spectators. And we also host an individual tourney that we actually just had this past Sunday, where we brought in 333 wrestlers. And as Bert mentioned, the parking lot was full, and our stands were as well in the building. So, we typically host these tournaments back-to-back on a Saturday and Sunday, on the second weekend of February. This is a benefit to our tournament and to the city as teams will come in, wrestle in our team tournament, spend the night, and compete in our individual tournament the next day. This year, due to a conflict at the arena, we had to separate our tournaments and have them on two separate Sundays. This has particularly hurt our team tournament. Last year, we had 12 teams. This year, we're down to eight. And that's, you know, that affects, of course, our profits and the number of people that would be coming to town. Last year, we were able to do the back-to-back days, but that was also without challenge, was not without challenge. We had to limit the number of teams again there. We had to start earlier than desired and do a lot of praying because we needed to be out of that gym space at 2 o'clock due to a girls' basketball game. When you work very hard to grow your tournaments, it's frustrating to have to move backwards due to facility limitations. And I strongly believe Watertown should not be tapped out at one girls' basketball game. Steve Moore and Suzie Fain are awesome, you know, they do everything they can to help us, but there's only so much they can do. We're at the mercy of the high school athletic schedules. As actually Melth just said, or youth organizations will tell you that in order for a tournament to grow and be successful, you really have to have a set region. You need people to be able to count on it, and you also step on the toes of other tournaments when you have to shift your date, because we all depend on each other's mutual support in order for our tournaments to be successful. What a new facility would mean to us, first of all, we'd be able to eliminate some of the problems I just talked about and grow our current tournaments. Secondly, we would be able to, we have the potential of bringing in two new tournaments into town, probably on average of every other year. Youth Wrestling has district and region qualifying meets, the first two Saturdays after the high school state meet, usually the first two weekends in March. We are not currently able to host these events because we do not have a facility available due to the girls' basketball regions and girls' basketball state. These tournaments would have a significant impact to Watertown, districts consisting of about 400 athletes, regions of about 600 athletes, and of course, all their families and siblings that would come along with them. According to Brookings, who hosts this tournament now, the economic impact for the region event alone, just a one-day tournament, is $276,000. Each year, when we gather with these other clubs to decide who's going to be hosting next year's tournaments or the tournaments in the years to come, we're always asked, "Why cannot Watertown host?" We have a very, very strong club, we have great families, we have a lot of manpower. And in addition, Watertown is an ideal location for a youth region tournament, because we're centrally located in our region, which goes as far south as Bell Rapids and as far north as Britton, South Dakota. We simply just do not have a facility to host these tournaments. Britton, South Dakota, population 1,200 people can host this, but we can't. And I think as a city, we shouldn't be okay with that. What would this facility need in order for us to host these tournaments? Floor space, enough for six mats with the proposed basketball court stats cover. Seating. As anyone in the H2O20 committee will tell you, Suzie wants seating. For us to even throw our hat in the ring for a region tournament, we have to have 2,200 seats, and we have to be able to host in one gym. To be honest, and wrestling people, you can nod, we've been in facilities that you can seat 2,200, it's way too crowded. We likely would not even attempt to host this tournament unless we could seat 3,000. Hosting tournaments is a huge, huge undertaking, and it's not a personal gain to myself or my coaches or our families that volunteer, but it's good for the community and good for the kids. But to take on extra headaches of trying to squeeze a tournament into a facility that's too small, it's easier for us to get our minivans in, head to Brookings and spend our money there. So, I am in favor of a new facility, but I beg you do not make the facility too small. Make this a place that people want to come to, make them leave saying, "I wish they would host this tournament every year." When the Civic Arena was built in 1962, I would say it's pretty safe to say that it was not built for exactly what they needed at that given moment. Youth sports and girls' sports were not then what they are now. Thankfully, those that planned it were visionaries and created a facility that we've been able to grow into, and that continues to be a great facility for Watertown. But it's been 52 years, and I think it's time for us to take action and be visionaries for our children and our children's children, and for the city we call home. Thanks.
I'd like to agree, because we are running a little late here. We want to get a lot of questions. If the other groups, their names are up there, if you want to say anything, if you can keep it under like 30 seconds, I'm okay with that. Or if you're okay with not doing any more, it's a terrible deal. If you feel as though you want to say something, you certainly can. But what I'd really like to do is, if you folks got questions, that's why this council is here tonight, and I'd like to get some questions to them. So, if you feel as though you really want to say something, you sure want to, I don't want to hold you back. Come on. 10 seconds, okay.
I'm Renee Cummings with Dakota Gold, and one thing that we would be strongly interested in doing is hosting a cheer dance competition. And that's something that we've always wanted to do, and available to just this, that would be great for the community.
Good evening. I'll keep this short as I can. My name's Don Madrav, I'm a family physician here in town. I also have the privilege of being a current chair of the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club. A lot of what gets talked about with the facilities is our needs coming forward. And so, the short version is, we affect a lot of kids in this community, and I think we have a great place in this community. The council and the mayor have been very supportive of us in the past, and I certainly think that's important to a great community going forward. Our key pillars, we need space. As was said 20 years ago, it's still the case here it is now. We're currently running about 93% of our capacity as an organization. In the last four days this last year, we were theoretically over that max capacity that we should be operating at. We mirror a 67% growth as the school does each year, and so that space is in desperate need for us and the programs to go forward. The second piece is location for us is key. Being part of the school district, we need a school district and a location much more than a proposed rec center, or the school needs that space. Success of the club is very much tied to those children and youth being able to get to that facility, being part of the busing hub and where it's at is key to that. And so, for us to be where we're at, it's key to us remaining successful. Several deficiencies in our current facility. Safety is key and the utmost importance. Currently, part of our marriage with the rec center equals eight entrances, like I mentioned earlier. That's the kind of thing that leaves us, gives us heartburn as board members at night, because we don't have control of all those access points. We have not head issues, and we don't have... We have not had issues, and we don't want to have issues. We take safety very seriously. However, at this point, looking at the national scene, stuff happens, and we don't want to be one of those and not learn from that. Structurally, we have a kitchen that serves 97,000 healthy meals a year. I don't know if many people realize that, but we serve a lot of youth in this community. My kitchen at home is bigger than the current kitchen in the facility. It's pretty meager at best, and so there are some needs there certainly. And so, I just want to stress that certainly there's the capital needs upfront, and we can talk about that. I think there's lots of proposals on how we could meet the needs, taking on the additional space if the rec center does move as proposed. I wanted to just stress that operationally, we can handle that increased space. It really jeopardizes the club, and I think it's important. This extra space certainly helps us move forward in the planning for this community. Certainly, our goals are to have effective, good citizens, and the youth in this community definitely need this program. And so, the bottom line is we need that more space, and that location is of utmost key for us as a club.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tom Franken. I'm the president of the board of directors of the rec center. I did have a half-hour talk here. I'll leave that aside and just let you all know that the rec center board is 100% behind this. We want everybody to realize that it's for the advancement of Watertown, not just Watertown and the rec center. We think this facility is just something that's needed for the city. And I just want to thank everybody for coming out here. Thank the mayor and the council for having this meeting so that everybody's more educated on this whole proposal and know what's going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. You told me two minutes.
No, 30 seconds.
I brought mine on a sticky note. These other guys got like pages.
I'm Pat Schreiber. I'm representing the park and recreation board, board of directors. We support the project. We're told that we'll have exclusive use of two courts, which we currently don't have. Currently, we give up our courts every day at 3:30 to 6:30 for the schools to use. If we have exclusive use of two courts, we'll be able to run our programs after school when they're needed the most. That's the biggest thing for us, and I'll let it go at that.
Thanks, Pat. I just wanted to reiterate also that if you heard earlier in the program, the park that we're at, this was in charge of those gymnasiums. The one is for the rec center. You guys are in charge of it, and you've worked closely with the school. Karen, do you want to say something?
Karen Witt, Watertown Convention and Visitors Bureau. You've heard a lot of this, and you know, it's time for Watertown to move forward. We bid things out in an event. We can't do it like next year. We bid things out four and five years. So, when someone comes and asks us, "We'd like to come to Watertown for your tournament," or "Suzy wants to bring her tournament," there's no way at this point that we can get the facilities that we need to have these events. We have to have them so we know we have them five years from now. The other, or the school is great, but we just can't tie that up. So then, of course, we lose it. Back in the early 2000s, Watertown was moving. It was, people would come to me and say, if I was working in Sioux Falls or doing something down there, they'd say, "What is Watertown moving? All we hear is Watertown's doing this, Watertown's doing this." Right now, every other community is doing this. We need to move forward, or we're going to lose so much. The economic impact that we're losing every day by not getting these tournaments is phenomenal. So, we need to support, we need to move forward like, get Watertown's name on the map again. Get moving forward.
Nice. I appreciate the rising stars, so let's be bold. Here you go. I should start rambling, then just stop.
Let's take the microphone away from the mayor. First of all, as a community, how exciting is it that we get to have this conversation? There's a lot of communities in South Dakota, there's a lot of communities across the Midwest that are facing quite the opposite. So, as a community, we get to come together, we get to have conversations about growing and new things, and that's awesome. I should introduce myself, Megan Gruman, Watertown Chamber of Commerce. As a chamber of commerce, we've always taken the stance that if this project is good for Watertown, if it's vital, if it's going to help with the economic growth, economic impact, the chamber board of directors, the chamber is going to stand behind it. Mr. Mayor, we're excited about this. It's time to start capitalizing on some of that revenue that our counterparts in these other communities are getting with these tournaments and some of these other activities they're able to host. So, as a chamber, we are, we're ready to help you move forward.
Hi, I'm Craig Atkins, and I'm with the Watertown Development Company, the executive director. And you've heard a lot tonight about economic development, and a lot about what a facility like this may or may not do for your community. And one thing that I just wanted to talk to you about very briefly is quality of place. You've heard a lot about quality of life. Quality of place is the kind of thought concept that people want to move to and that companies want to come to and that companies want to grow in. And I can tell you from my own personal experience, as we're out talking to companies who are looking for workforce or companies that are looking to expand, that one of their biggest concerns right now is not about trying to find financial assistance to help them grow. It's not about trying to find facilities. It's about trying to find people. And so, as a community, we need to be able to have things to showcase to potential employees, potential employers, and existing employers. And I think it's crucially important across the board that those folks have opportunities to take a look at the community. What they see from the outside looking in, when those companies look at communities like Watertown, or those potential residents that are at Watertown, is they see a community that's proud of itself. And how do you do that? Well, you do that by reinvesting in public infrastructure. And I think a facility like this would definitely send a message across the board. Just one other comment that I would make. We were doing some work just a couple days ago on some new demographic information, and one of the things that we found out is that Watertown's population since 2010 is up by almost 300 people. So, that would just add to the idea that we are drawing people. Just imagine what we could do if we had more opportunities to provide a quality of place. With that, thank you.
Sure, come on up. And anybody that wants to talk now, you've got the podium. The mic is yours. Y'all that are here wants to speak. So, go ahead, just introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jen. I'm actually an employee of the Gym Incorporated, located in uptown Watertown. I'm here representing, sorry, representing my employer, Scott McEnroy. He's the owner of the Gym Incorporated. Scott is actually out of town this week, so he could not attend tonight's meeting, so he's prepared a statement for me to read. I fully support increasing flat floor space, pools, and additional seating to attract more events and tournaments to Watertown and to improve the quality of life and activities for our kids and families. However, I do not support adding a new fitness facility when our community already has many private fitness options available to choose from. The new building project has been promoted in a way that misleads the public into thinking they have to accept everything included in the current proposal. From the start 10 years ago, this project was just flat floor space. In time, the fitness facility was put into this project by those wishing to expand the rec center, when it was really not in need of the community. This increased the cost by about $8 million. Scott wants to cut the fitness facility from this project and save the $8 million. The public deserves to see a breakdown of the building and operational costs of each segment of the proposed project. The size of this building is 100,000 square feet. The fitness facility, part of the project, looks to be about 35,000 to 40,000 square feet. This is more than a third of the project. Of the three segments, the flat floor space, the pools, and the workout facility, the workout facility is getting the largest piece of pie. Shouldn't that flat floor space be the centerpiece of this project and not the fitness facility? If we cut the fitness facility out of this project, we could spend the money to increase the flat floor space, and with the pools and the additional seating to attract more events, we will bring more money to our city, and the city could save the $8 million for other much-needed projects. A workout facility does not bring more out-of-town dollars to Watertown. As this project has been marketed, it has always been looked together as if it's all or nothing. I would like to suggest that we look at each part of the project separately. I think people are being misled to think that they have to take what they're being offered, or somehow that they don't support Watertown's kids. Throwing in a new workout area with machines and weight rooms for adults to use is not a quality of life issue for our kids. The city of Watertown should not be in direct competition with private tax-paying businesses by expanding to a state-of-the-art fitness facility. How can a small business person compete with the buying power of a city? Watertown taxpayers presently fund a portion of the rec center's operational costs with taxpayers' subsidies. Being a small business person, I don't receive the benefit of government subsidies to pay for operational costs for expansions. If the city builds this expanded fitness facility, it will cannibalize memberships from the other five private fitness facilities in Watertown. With so many fitness options for people to choose from, why is a new workout place being considered a need? To me, it seems like more of a want. Again, I fully support increasing flat floor space, pools, and additional seating to attract more events and tournaments and to improve the quality of life and activities for our kids and families. However, I do not support adding a new fitness facility when the community already has many private fitness options available to choose from. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to say something, Bert?
Scott had sent in a lot of concerns to us regarding, in some of the statements that were just made. And so, we had a chance to look at some of those concerns, and I just wanted to make a couple comments just real brief. As far, we're not understanding where the 30,000 to 40,000 square feet for a rec center is. Mike counted that up, and I counted it up, and we're at 19,000 square feet for the fitness area. So, that's one clarification that I would like to make, and if someone wants to challenge that, then we can get the plan out and look at it. And then, I guess the other thing that was mentioned regarding this is that the memberships of the new community center is what fingles it. That's what makes it pay for itself every year. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And I almost sound like Elvis there. Thank you very much. I love the microphone here. It's G-Boys today. Wow, this is great. Hey, I just wanted to say, it wasn't too long ago. Forget it, Steve. Get out of here. Come on now. Then I want to say a couple words after.
My name's Steve Foster. I've been a resident of this town all my life, and I just want to mention to everyone, and especially the council, we're going to go through with this. Don't skimp on it. We're building for the future. If you want to see Watertown grow, this is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. You guys have done a great job, but we've heard a lot of the public. I think it's time to hear from the council. We've all put out what we think, and I think starting with on this end, if Mike, you wouldn't mind telling us where you stand? If you've got a problem with the issue, tell us what it is, and let's go from there because I think we all want to hear what you guys have to say.
Well, I've got a little different or a little more unique perspective on this than many of my fellow councilmen, because I have been involved in this for what seems like an eternity.
Seven years.
About seven or eight years, something like that. And it's time for retirement, but you know, I have been in this and I know this thing, this project, in depth, and I've heard and talked to so many people. And we have to, somehow we have to take all those things into perspective and come out with a solution. And, Steve, did you do that? And so, I am very much in favor of this. And I've said this from day one, that I believe in this so much for our community for so many reasons, that it's not just a recreation center. It's just, it's much bigger than that in our community. And I've always said, as long as we can do it responsibly, and we can do it in a financially responsible manner, I'm very, very much in favor of this project.
I'm definitely in support of the project. I guess maybe I can back up even a notch further than 2005, when we did the Vision 2015. I happened to be at that time chair of the chamber and was involved in many meetings that involved this and other things. It wasn't specifically this at the time, obviously, but it was the concept that we needed more floor space. The evolution of all this has come with the concerns of the rec center and stuff. I understand that because it's more involved than just the one building. It involves the Boys and Girls Club, and there's lots of things to consider here. I'm cognizant of the issues that private enterprise has here, and you know, I'll keep that in mind as we go forward with this. But I also think from, one of the things that I believe that I learned from our tour to Grand Fortune Fargo is that, you know, we think of this pretty much, and I do in my mind quite a bit, as a youth thing, but there was a lot of 55-plus people that were taking advantage of this, a lot. It was a big, a big thing that surprised them down there of how involved that was. And I think, you know, going forward, I'm well above 55 age myself, so I don't, I guess I think that the senior citizens, and I don't think that's the word we're going to want to use in the future here, but the senior citizens are more likely to want to be involved with kids and other people and this type of thing as opposed to this is a senior citizen's atmosphere and just those folks themselves. I think they want to be involved in this, and one of the things that we found with that is a lot of the funds that they raised and a lot of the income that came from, that came from those people. And along with that, too, the other thing that I think I learned was that, if you didn't know that, that the whole 20, well, they got 24 million that they had done in this one in Grand Fortune, 22 million of that they raised without any tax dollars at all. I want to challenge, and I will be one of the first ones to input money into that, but I would, as a city comes forward with whatever money that we choose to do, that I would challenge that people get on board with this and get behind and be supportive of it, and Steve says, you can sign up at the door here and contribute. So, but you know, just going to go forward as far as I can.
Okay. I'm kind of leaning towards breaking the fence right now because there's a lot of people that are older and they don't belong to the rec center. And you've got to prove to me that the businesses will succeed and go from there. Another thing I've been hammered with questions is there is opposite vote, and there's nothing that's set about that. So, I'm kind of breaking the fence right now.
Dan Elderson, when I ran for this council, I took this job very seriously, and I think what I'm hearing here tonight is that all of you, or not, I mean, we haven't heard from all of you, but we've heard from representative groups, maybe from all of you, that said one of the most important things for all of us is our kids. And I agree, there's been some talk about older people and so on, and there will be places for that. But when you stop and think about all the talk there's been tonight about our kids, whether it's soccer, whether it's swimming, whether it's basketball, whatever it is, we're talking about moving forward because we're interested in our kids, and hallelujah for that. about moving forward, because we're interested in our kids, and hallelujah for that.
Can you hear me now? Okay, good. I had it working earlier today, but apparently we're having some technical difficulties. I was kind of like Steve at the beginning of this project several years ago, not sure if this was maybe the thing to do, and it's kind of evolved over time, and after I've studied it, looked at different elements of it, and looked at different facilities, I think this is the way, this is the direction we need to head. I had a discussion with a guy yesterday, maybe a small argument. He couldn't answer the question after I posed to him. I said, "Tell me in what way this would negatively impact your life if we did this project?" And if you're against this project, you have to ask yourself, look in the mirror if you're against this project, and ask yourself, "How will it negatively impact my life?" He couldn't answer that. And so I think going forward, we need to remember that, that it's going to be positive, it's going to be good for everybody, and there's really, it's tough to find an issue with it. If you're finding an issue with this project, you're really picking. I know there's a few things that aren't going to work for some people, but for the majority, I think this is going to be great. I do prefer, as Mayor stated, the bigger quality of life that the Finance Committee is going to look at. We can get a lot of these things handled, and it's affordable for the city. I've talked it over with Shelley, and I think this is a good direction to go. So just get everybody in support of it, talk to your neighbors, your friends, coworkers, and let's get behind this thing.
Mike, are you sitting down over there? Yeah. This is going to kind of surprise you. Me and Mike have kind of butted heads on this project quite a few times, but not really, I mean, because we both have our own opinions, but I think the people that are in the crowd today that know me have been an advocate of the city of Watertown for many years. They've sat on our boards, they've volunteered a lot of time in the softball field, baseball field, things like that, and there's a reason why I did it, because I believe in the future of the community, the same reason I'm sitting up here tonight. When I decided to run for City Council, I wanted to be, you know, I've been a lifelong resident of City Watertown. I've always wanted to be part of that. After listening to a lot of people out here tonight, I've always had a saying in everything I've been involved in, and it's been mostly used since, is our youth is our future. Who wouldn't, in their right minds, want to invest in the future of our community? I think I've kind of, after sitting down with Shelley the other day and going over the numbers, it's not that I've opposed yet the project, it just wasn't totally sold on. I was afraid that, you know, what are we going to do? Are we going to jeopardize future generations, which, after sitting down with Shelley the other day and looking at that, I truly believe that City Watertown can afford this. I think we can afford to actually do more, just like John just mentioned, and that will all come out in the open shortly. But like I say, who in their right mind wouldn't want to invest in the future of our community? Our youth are the future of our community. I think it's time we stand up, get this project done, get it rolling, and get on with helping out our youth in the community, so, thank you.
My name is Russ Wilkins. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve you over the next few months as we go through this project. We will all do our part to our best ability, and I'm sure that we'll be able to come up with something that will support not only the young folks, but the old, the older gentlemen and women. It's important that we involve those folks. We build our project around some of them, and that will be helpful as we move forward. We're just at the beginning to start to work now. It's going to take a lot of hard work, and a lot of time, and a lot of effort to pull this thing through and to make it happen. We'll all appreciate it when we're done, and it would be nice to look at that facility and look how we've made Watertown grow.
My name is Bruce Beeler. I represent Ward D. You know, before I took this office, before, when I was campaigning, I knocked on a lot of doors, talked to a lot of folks, and one of the things I carried over and over was, Watertown is stagnant. We need to move forward. We need to make things happen. We need to be a premier community once again. And that made a big difference to me. I was a part of, I was a part of the building and the marketing committees with the H2O2O committees, and I did ask a lot of questions, and I was skeptical on some issues as well. And I just, I just want to say that I am fully in support of a facility, and I also think this will solve a lot of problems for our community. And the problems we're having with the Boys and Girls Club, which is kind of near and dear to my heart, actually was a part of the group that initiated the building of the Boys and Girls Club many years ago. I think this has, will provide a lot of opportunities for people with handicap. I think there will be opportunities more for older citizens, senior citizens, and also I think this is a perfect place for family activity. This is a great place for people to rally around and, you know, I got to tell you, the rec center, some of my lifelong friends that I have today, I met, and I know you probably don't believe this, but I just play a lot of racquetball. And I met them there, and I think that there's opportunities for those kinds of relationships to develop in a facility like this. But, you know, we're a cold-weather community, and there's a whole lot of months where we can't do much, and that was one thing I heard a lot of, too, is, there's just nothing to do around here. Well, this will provide us with a lot more opportunities in those winter months, and I certainly know a poster child for health and wellness. But I think that's a key component to this facility is the health and wellness of the citizens in our community, and this will provide that outlet for us, that opportunity for folks to come together in those areas. I think there's been a tremendous amount of work done, it's getting a little windy here, but there's a tremendous amount of work done by a lot of people, hundreds of hours, you know, dissecting every concern, every question, and we're going to do the best we can to provide you with a facility that will do the best job for our community, that will serve as many people as possible. But it's been a long time, folks. We haven't done a whole lot of anything like this for quite some time, and it's really time that we move forward. And the other part I just want folks to understand is that we could build this thing and not spend a tremendous amount, I mean, it's a lot of money, but we can still be very, very fiscally sound in the community. So rest assured, even if we do this, we will be fiscally sound. So that's what I think.
The problem with being towards the end of the line is that everybody else says all the things you wanted to say. So unlike Bruce, when I decided to run for City Council, it was because, similar to what Karen said, when I moved here in 1996, we were the premier community. It was like I went back to a bigger city that I moved here from and said, "You would not believe this small little town." They just have so much going for them, and there's so much energy and drive, and by the time I started to run, what I was hearing was, as Bruce said, "Watertown's not moving forward anymore. Watertown's stagnant." And I had to look at this from all different angles, too, considering private sector, all the different things that have been discussed here tonight, and like Randy said, the numbers had to make sense. And I'm confident that the numbers make a lot of sense. I'm also confident that the city can not only afford this project, but as Steve mentioned earlier, we can look at the bald diamonds and the ice and some of the other things that seem to have been backburnered for quite some time now. I pictured this community center, I really like to look at it as a community center. I picture it as someplace that I could pick up a grandchild or grandchildren, take them to the leisure pool, swim with them, you know, maybe use one of the other rooms, or while they're swimming, you know, take a yoga class, something like that. You know, and I need to disclose here, I'm not a member of the rec center, I'm a member of one of the private gyms here, so I do support, you know, contracts for my money around here, but I think that everyone so far here is right. Now's the time. We've done all of the things that we need, fire stations, sewers, things like that. This has been pushed to the side for too long, and we need to be South Dakota's rising star, we need to be the community on the go, whatever, things that we need to do to move forward. I really see this as it, and now that the numbers make sense, and listening to some of the people talk tonight has reinforced my feelings that this is what we really need to do. I see a couple other groups here in the audience, too, that haven't even been mentioned up on that group, that would be able to take advantage of this facility. So we can only grow from here. You know, those question marks on, you know, what else can we do? I see some groups in this audience right now who would probably tell you a dozen other things that they could do in a facility like this.
Well, my name's Don Robey from Ward A. There's three basic questions I have to answer as a council member. One is, is there a need? Two, can we afford it? And three, can we afford to operate it? I've lived in six cities between the time I left high school and moved back ten years ago, I raised my kids here, and I've seen a lot of different communities of what other types of centers are out there, and I can tell you, we do need this. I believe it's important for the use of the local members, but also in an economic development sense. Can we afford to build it? I've spent a lot of time with Shelley, talking different numbers, and I want to also at this time, just publicly, thank Shelley for everything she does. I can tell you, I can say with great confidence, after spending many hours, that her mind and heart are the right place for Watertown. We can afford to build this facility. In fact, as the mayor has mentioned, there are other things we can possibly do under today's current economic environment, the way finance is working at this time. Just to be sure, I did spend three hours with a friend of mine, whose financial acumen I greatly respect, and had him poke holes in this, and he just confirmed everything that Shelley and I and others have went through, and that we're definitely in great shape. And I would also just say to past members of the council, mayors, that Watertown has always been run in a very fiscally conservative and good fashion. The third item, can we afford to operate it? I have seen some of the operating numbers and talked with Shelley and what they've done with the conservative estimates, and I'm confident we can afford to operate this facility. Lastly, there's risk in everything you do, but I would say at this point, the biggest risk we have is not doing this project.
Hi. My name is Tim Brendan. Tonight, so far you've heard from virtually everybody that wants this, I'm one that doesn't. You take a look, it's easy to spend somebody else's money. If this was, I agree with the youth part, but if this was a good deal, why isn't there a private investor wanting to put something like this up and make money out of it? And also, look at the city, they said the, like the police department, we're cramped or this, okay? So then we build a new police station. Okay, now, they say the colony and everybody else. Where does it end? Where does the people have to keep paying and paying? It's time that the city tightens its belt and say, "Hey, we can get by for a while. Then we'll think about building it in the future." And plus, I disagree with a thing that was just said earlier about this will bring jobs. Well, this facility won't bring jobs. Industry brings jobs. And so I disagree with that part. And I think the city better start looking at tightening their own belts. I only, I'm limited to my funds. I can't say, "Hey, I'm going to spend your money." So it's time that the city stops spending a bunch of money and tightening their belts.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lindsay Schwinger. I'm with the Watertown Compesca Pressures. I'm head coach of our roller derby team. I'm a figure skate coach, and I'm also a figure skating coach for the parking rec. So as a community member of Watertown for my entire life, I fully understand the concerns of some of, some of the people I know saying, "Oh, we need a second sheet of ice." Well, yes, that is true. If we do not have any more flat floor space for the rest of Watertown to grow into and a new multipurpose facility to grow into, you know, a second sheet of ice isn't going to matter, because the second sheet of ice only affects one group of people. The multipurpose center would affect many groups of people in a very positive way. And as someone who lives in Watertown, my mother-in-law is actually the head babysitter for the parking rec. So I'm there on a daily basis, dropping my kids off with their grandma, and I can tell you now that the facility down there is also lacking the babysitting room. You know, I can just imagine so much potential for our kids if you need to go and drop your kids off so you can work out how much fun and exercise they would also fit and how this would benefit them. It would also benefit groups like us who are just starting out, who is juggling our times with the parking rec on, when can we practice? Because there are a hundred other groups that need to also practice, and we all need to try and share, and that's just very, very difficult for everyone to work out with right now. So I, we fully would help fundraise. I think if this is a community project, the community will come together to support it. Not one person is paying for it. We are all going to invest in this. This is a community investment that I think we all fully believe in. And I think that's all I've got for now.
Hi. My name is Bill Johnson. I moved into town here in 2010, and I just am amazed at the community itself, with all the things that, with all the things that the community has to offer to the people. I've heard a few people say that there's not much out there, you know, boring in town, but there's things to do if you look for them. I was first against, against the whole proposal, because I see other areas in town where we need to spend our money. And I didn't know if you heard it, Bill Johnson, some of the council members probably know me from my nasty emails about snow removal. I'm a dad. Nice to meet you. But anyhow, I'm a big proponent of keeping our roads and snow removal, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to offend anybody when I go about my rants, but if I hit a bump in my recs, my tire, it just pisses me off. But hearing all these people tonight talk about who's going to use the facility, my first thought when I heard about it was like, we're going to be hearing crickets in that facility in like ten years, because sometimes that's what happens. People just don't, it's all new, everybody uses it, time goes on, and the energy fades, and off we go. But with the energy that's in here from the people that say they will use it, I believe that the facility itself will be used, and that's not a problem. The funding, the second penny sales tax, you know, at first, you know, I'm really into the roads, you know, and we got a lot of road problems. One of the council members asked me to know them. I found two that don't need work. I'll let you know which ones they are. But as far as funding it, I'm all in favor of using the second penny sales tax portion. I have faith in our council and our mayor to make sure that things are done properly. The budget, as far as maintaining it and the operating cost of 1.8 million, that concerns me a little, because, yeah, 1.8, but, you know, it does concern me a little, because estimates are never right, and they're usually always short. And the only concern I have would be being able to maintain the operating costs over time without digging into other areas and having other areas that need addressed suffer, like roads. But, you know, I changed my mind. I'm for it, and for all you nearby people, very much. I'm, I'm for it and for all you young guys, people. One other thing about Watertown, when I moved to town, I'm 50 and I got a lot of friends that are around my age and this town, everybody knows everybody and it seems like everybody's been living here forever. And I'm just amazed, you should be proud of that fact, that, that people wanna stay in this town, but you gotta keep the younger kids in this town and this is the way to do it. So, thank you.
Glad to be with you, it's just amazing. Russ, come on down. Yeah, see, I do have a couple committees that I need some help on, Bill.
Russ Rocky, and this is the second meeting we've had to date, or not, not to date, but this week that I've been to. The other one was on the casino issue. Glad that this town, town is progressive and allowed that. That's part of the deal to get the people here to town. I was probably coming into this meeting a little more on Tim's side than not, still have a lot of questions about how it's gonna be caused, how, how, how it's gonna be naked or being cost even. One of the concerns was that the cost of the, the rec center, how much can the individual within family, if it's like the ones that were in there, it's a cost for it, but it's for a lot of people. And you look at a progressive city that we have, if we look back to 1955 or so, when the city bought and started the utilities, at that time, I believe that cost was like a million and a half dollars, 1955. And look what it's done for the community. We're the lowest, probably the lowest cost for utilities in the state and it's been proven. So, I was one of the first on the, the wrestling booster club charter member. My son wrestled, know the all cops well. And I'm with Susie. If you're gonna do it, do it right. Make it so we can replace some of this, this eight tournament that we're gonna lose according to the South Florida High School Athletic Association. Bring more revenue with smaller tournaments probably and use that facility so we can, it can generate and I have friends that have motels and stuff and it would just help everyone move every, all the, all the things. So, if we're gonna do it like Susie says, let's do it right and, and have enough seating, make it, make it work and like I have my grandson and, and granddaughters have been in the hockey association in some way, they can work in another sheet of ice that would be awesome. I appreciate it, thank you.
I'm not used to speaking in front of a bunch of people like this, so if I sound like Uncle Si, I apologize. My name is Mark Ryer. I am a former world champion in powerlifting and I have trained at the rec center for a lot of years and John and Dave and staff have been very open to me bringing in Special Olympics kids and coaching them with powerlifting. It touches me deep inside if they open up a facility like that. I recently switched one of the private facilities because of the spacing for my own training because when, if you understand the sport of powerlifting, you gotta kind of be a little touched in the head, you know, and to, to get excited about moving a bunch of heavy iron. And when you're in the zone and you're cramped or spaced, it's really hard to, you know, control yourself and not get mad at somebody, but instead of coming across and getting mad at somebody and looking like a goofball or something, you know, I just figured, all right, I'll just go to another place. It was a tough decision for me and John, I mean, you guys, you and Dave and your guys, I mean, I'm all for it. I mean, I don't know what else to say, but thank you guys and just don't, like Steve Foster said, don't skimp, but do this right. Do it right.
I had met Mark a long time ago at the rec center and I came in one day and some guy was making a lot of noise and I was like, what's going on? And then, and I saw how much weight he was moving and I was like, whoa, that's a lot of weight. But what I do wanna reiterate what he said on that, in the two areas where you work out at the rec center, if you've been in there, if there's about two or three people in there, it's crowded, you can't do anything, we need more room.
Thank you. My name's Chuck Beck, but I'm the head coach of the swimming team. Just the consensus, sounds great for this, this project and I know how much work has gone into it. There's a legitimate concern from some of the private gyms. I absolutely understand that concern, just kind of anecdotally, I don't have statistical studies, but I think as the level of fitness increases in a community, the patronage at those private gyms is going to increase. I know from, just from our perspective, as our kids have gotten better, more focused, our older kids have, have been pursuing regional, national type goals. I've got an entire group of kids who, much to John's chagrin, train at, train at a private gym because we don't have the time slots available at the rec center because of the amount of programming that they offer. I think as the soccer program expands, when they have access to actual blocked off practice time, the next step for them is gonna be intensive cross training. If it's not available at the rec center because of the numerous types of programming they've got there, their option is a private gym. I really think, I absolutely understand as a, as a former private business owner, the fear that you would have about something like this, but I really do think that private gyms in the long run could come out and, and come out ahead actually with the community fitness level being raised in general. So, I'm, I'm sympathetic to their concerns, but I really think the more kids that I have training in the water, the more people I'm gonna need to cross train and there's only somebody that are gonna be able to be done at the rec center no matter how big it is. So, I'm, I'm gonna be looking at those private gyms to, to help us as we pursue the goals that we have for our kids. So, just a different perspective.
Just real quickly, Gordy has one quick question I think I'll ask.
I certainly appreciate the enthusiasm that I'm seeing here today. However, and I'm also very supportive of the program, project, however, there's been very little, if anything, said about what are we going to do for the senior citizens of Watertown. I appreciate you going to Fargo, Grand Forks, seeing what they had up there, but I would certainly recommend that the committee, the council, visit Sioux Falls and visit their active generation facility and primarily for, for senior citizens. Might get some ideas where this would be truly a multipurpose facility. Thank you.
My name's Will Morlock and I've been involved with the Ice Arena since the mid 80's when in fact I was in the steering committee that helped build that facility. And the only thing I would add, and I'd like to have the city council consider is the fact that, don't forget the facility that you've got. The Ice Arena was built basically with $10,000 from the city, the rest of the money was private donations and things like that. George Mason made a nice contribution. We've got a facility that is used by the figure skaters, it's used by hockey, it's used by open skating and things that needs some work. It needs some maintenance. We're talking in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars to three quarters of a million dollars in maintenance. Let's not forget those kind of facilities. Let's fund them. We can't wait for a second sheet of ice when it comes to the skating programs that we have. The Lions Club this year has 106 kids that have signed up for the Ice Show, which is the first weekend in April. And when we get that place full with 900 to 1,000 people in there for the show, there's two mince bathroom stalls, there's three for the ladies. There's a facility there that is used a lot for tournaments and for youth, but it's not adequate for what we need. Don't forget that facility. Do some investment in that and then later on we can look at a second sheet of ice. Right now, we need to bring that facility up to standard.
Hi, my name is Doug Sharp. I'm not gonna add a whole lot to this that hasn't already been said, but a couple observations. These conversations were taking place in the mid 90's. The Ice Hockey Arena was already too small back at that time and these conversations were taking place, plans were being made and they didn't quite make it to the drawing board, but they were being talked about at the same time this facility was being talked about, this facility ultimately got built. But the case has been made over and over again and I would encourage the city as well as all the citizens to get behind this project. You can only talk about doing something for so long before it does affect your community and its ability to grow. I've been heavily involved, as was, as was my father, in economic development in this town and on several boards. And one of the most common complaints or concerns about people moving to town is with family members about what they're gonna do. That is a concern, it is a comment that's made all the time. We've had many companies that cannot bring executives here for that very reason, we don't have the facilities that people need. So I support it 100%, it's needed. The case has been made for the last 20 years, it's time to quit talking about it, we need to do it. Now, a couple of things there, the mayor brought up, the quality of life bond, that's been tossed around for a number of years, that is the way to do this project and we need to commit to doing all of the projects. We need to commit to the facility, the rec center, the flat floor space desperately and all the ice. The marina at the lake, I think would be a huge boost because one of the comments you have of people that do boating in our area is they talk about going down to Lake Okoboji where you can get on your boat and drive across the bay and have a hamburger and drive across to another bay and have a beer and you make a day of it. And right now, we don't have that availability out of our, out of our lake. But I would encourage us to go with the quality of life bond and for the folks that say we can't afford it, we all stand in the shade of trees we don't, that we didn't plant. Now, that's a really old saying, but the truth of the matter is, we're in buildings that we didn't help pay for generations before us did. And we are standing in the shade of trees that we didn't plant, it's time that we plant some of the trees for the future generations. And my only question is, is I have not been supportive of the location. I've made no, no bones about it. I, if I was gonna invest that much money, I would probably pick a location that's easier to get people into and out, one that's closer to hotels, restaurants and shopping. Now, that doesn't make it the right decision, it's just what I would think. And so my question for the mayor or anybody who went on that trip on Monday and toured various facilities, could you tell me the kind of area or describe the kind of areas that these facilities were put in and what was the ingress, egress points where you can take 1,000 people out of a parking lot quickly like you possibly could down on First Avenue? I think First Avenue would be a great place for this. I think would be a great anchor to help speed up the development all along there. And it's just, just an observation, I'm not a professional developer, but if you could share your insights on where the other facilities were located, why they're located there and what makes this location up in the middle of the neighborhood where there are no hotels, restaurants or anything else, that'd be information I'd be curious to know.
In regards to the two facilities we went to, the first one we went to was the Grand Forks Facility and that was, that's a new facility, it's on the southern part of town that is in residential area. It's adjacent to the residential area. It was placed there because it was to stimulate growth and it was because that was the growth portion of their town. And when you look at Watertown, you know, we've got a, we've got a lot of uniqueness in our community and how our community develops and some of those things create barriers development for us. The interstate is one, you know, the lakes are one, the, the river is one. We have the airport that's kind of blocked in the middle of our town and all those things create barriers for us. And so Watertown's a real predictable area to try to figure out where you're gonna grow. We're growing north. And so that is gonna continue to be into the, into the future, it's gonna be our growth area. This facility is primarily a community-based facility, community use facility. And that's why you choose to put it in the area that your community members are living. It, it, it isn't primarily an economic development facility, meaning an entertainment venue. It's, it's, that's a secondary use for it that brings value to our community. Fargo is the same scenario. That is in the southwest part of town. They strategically locate some of these in their community, that's a YMCA by the way. Right, YMCA, in conjunction with Sanford Health. That's in the southwest part of town. And that again is a residential area. It's actually right next to the ice rink, there's ice, indoor ice facility they have there. And there's not a lot of commerce right there. It's mostly residential. Matter of fact, they, they showed us the, there's incredible amount of building that's going on in that area from a, a rental housing area, apartment type. So that's, those two facilities are where those are located. As far as the road systems go, they, they're typically three lane roads. I believe they're road each, or, drive lane on each side with a center turn lane typically. So, that, that's the general area that those are.
Thanks, Mike. Has anybody got any questions out there? We want the microphone, bring it up to you, we sure can do that. Sure.
Anyhow, some of my concerns before I came in this evening were answered and answered quite well. A couple of things that haven't been brought up is the infrastructure that's already in that neighborhood. I'm really concerned about 11th Street. We already have the junior high. We have a new bus barn that brings all the buses down that street. I happen to have a back door that faces 14th Avenue, so I don't want a whole lot of traffic built up there. But I'm wondering if the city has decided to go ahead with an infrastructure upgrade on 11th Street and 14th Avenue. And I really like Mr. Sharp's comments about location. I really think this could be the trigger that starts Willow Creek Drive growing the way they thought it would a few years back. But all in all, I came in here as a cynic and I'm sold. We're gonna need this.
Those are actually some great questions and what's really nice about tonight's meeting is we do have a city engineer that he can kind of address that 11th Street, 14th Avenue, 15th Street and 18th Avenue, kind of where we're going on there.
I know I shouldn't have said it, but thank you. We are in the process, actually 11th Street is scheduled and will be constructed in 11th Street North of 14th Avenue this year, in conjunction with the middle school. That'll be a three lane road. We also then have scheduled for next year, 11th Street, we had a neighborhood meeting less than a month ago on 11th Street South and that's from First Avenue down to Highway 212. So we are making significant improvements. What you might see on 11th Street is gonna be a three lane road, just like Mike mentioned up in North Dakota. We're also working on 19th Street, 9th Street is scheduled for 2015 as well. That'll be reconstructed to be south of 10th Avenue, it'll be an overlay, you know, an overlay and the left sidewalks on both sides of that street. And then north of 10th Avenue, up to 14th Avenue, it's gonna be increased to a three lane road, just exactly the same way. And we've done, part of the traffic engineers, you can carry about 17,000 cars a day on a three lane road. Now, right now, we're about 5,000, 6,000 on 19th Street, which is one of our busiest local streets. 14th Avenue, we do have scheduled a few years out. I believe it's about 2018 and these funds that we use for these upgrades are coming from resistance funding, which comes from the federal gas cap that's allocated, sub-allocated down to our community levels. So, you buy gas, you're paid for those road improvements. We are looking at doing additional work on 14th Avenue in 2018 and then in 2016 as well. State's gonna be redoing Highway 81 north from 13th Avenue up to 18th Avenue. So we do have quite a few improvements scheduled in the next few years and again, not competing with the first, the second penny sales tax. not competing with the first, the second penny sales tax, it's coming out of the federal highway tax. Mike mentioned that about 18th and 15th Avenue, 15th Street, which would be on the east side of the Paulus Community Center, and 18th Avenue, which is on the north side. And those would be constructed using local funds and what we are currently doing, the land has been acquired from the, in addition to the land for the rec center, the gentleman that we bought the land from did dedicate the other half of that road so we'll have the street right away. And then as things progress, we can continue to make those improvements. But right now, we're just scheduled to bring 11th Street in and then north of the school we're gonna move 18th and then as it expands through the east, we'll continue to build. From the south, we're gonna be coming in on 15th Street and that's gonna be down in conjunction, I think, with San Lucent Church is looking at building a church up there and so progress at least up to the driveway for the community center. And then as we require, expand that up to 18th Avenue and make a little square to get around both the rec center and the middle school. We'll have multiple ways in and out. Alternately, we, this area, as Mike mentioned, is the fastest growing area, we've already talked to developers that may be interested in extending 18th Avenue all the way up to 19th. This is gonna be growing area of town and it will have good access because you'll have access on that second access north, Watertown access. I think it's a changing thing.
Thanks, Tom, I appreciate it. You guys wanna say anything quick? I wanna kind of get going a little bit.
Say, Mayor?
Yes.
Quick question, is, is the rec center, on the map, is the rec center side gonna be school zoned 15 mile an hour or is that gonna be normal speeds and the school side just be 15 mile an hour? Curious what the school zone's gonna be on.
You know, I'm, I'm not really sure how you're looking at that, Tom. I would assume the school is 15, 14th Avenue will not be 15, that'll still be the 35, 15th Street will be the normal 25, if I'm not mistaken. Part of the 18th Avenue up on the north side will be 15, which goes across the school, but then it would of course go up to 165 right there. Right? That's what I was saying. Okay, we wanna get that traffic moving. But I tell you what, I'm gonna just buzz over here and kind of sum this up and if you folks have any other questions, just feel free to scream at me and, and I'll stop. But you know, in summary, this is a 22 to 24 million dollar project and I think that it's just incredible the support that this is giving right now. This is funded by our second penny sales tax. Remember, it's not a property tax, I can't reiterate that enough. It is not going to affect your taxes. It is funded absolutely by second pennies, so there's no tax increase. I really think that it's time that Watertown needs to come together, get this thing done. I wish somebody had it on YouTube right now that we could get a song out here like, I'm so excited. I really think that it would be so appropriate. So I'm really excited to get going. I'm gonna be asking this council, they didn't know this until just now, it'll be the second meeting in March, I'll be asking them to go forward with this project and I hope you guys. And if anybody noticed Shelley, she's writing down, oh crap, did he say the second? She's put this on the agenda already. So it's there, you guys, you're gonna be asked the question, thumbs up or down, do we go on this and it's gonna be that second week and, or the second meeting? We're gonna get it done, I think we can do it. All right, thank you. I know we can do this. I don't think, I know we can get it done. I think this council will be wandering around, if you have any questions for them, they can, I'm sure as much as this is busy.